It is 7:07 and it is my pleasure to welcome everyone this evening to the Subcommittee of Curriculum Instruction and Student Life. Could I have a thumbs up from our participants at home that you can hear me okay? I see some thumbs up. Great. Thank you so much for joining and we appreciate the flexibility as there are a number of activities happening in our city tonight. So BevCam is using its resources for a longer meeting with our planning board tonight. And so we are recording this session. Everyone who is participating is being recorded this evening. We have a quorum present here in person at the Beverly Middle School. Present are Dr. Ken Anne McKenzie and Rachel Abel. We also have Dr. Dorothy Flaherty, Principal Betty Taylor, our Recording Secretary Liz Karan, Dr. Chrocheck is in the building, as well as we have some guests this evening viewing us. Online, we are joined this evening by Dr. Andre Morgan, Principal Gregory Twombly. We have our citizen representatives, Joanne Hildreth and Karen Goodno McGuire. We also have our student representatives Cameron Redmond and Ava Mack. So welcome everyone. I will monitor the room to see if anyone else joins us this evening. Our first order of business would be the Pledge of Allegiance. If I could ask Dr. McKenzie to lead us in the pledge. We do have a flag here with us. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much for that. I should note that the Chair of the Subcommittee was unexpectedly detained, so I'll be filling the role of Chair this evening so that we can move forward with our agenda. Our next order of business on the agenda is the approval of our meeting records. We've actually had two meetings since our last SISIL. The first was on the 5th of May, so May 5, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve? These were included in your packet? Thank you. So Ken Anne McKenzie has made the motion and Dot Flaherty has seconded. Were there any edits or corrections that the body wanted to entertain? I'm not seeing any hands with the remote participation. We do need to have a roll call vote. Is your headset working?
It is, but I'm getting a lot of feedback.
Would you mind muting while I just do the roll? Thanks. Okay, I'll start with our student reps, Cameron Redmond.
Yes.
Karen Goodno McGuire. Oh, sorry. I saw Ava Mack there. Ava Mack? Are you still with us? She may have dropped. Let's see. Who's still with us? Oh, she may have lost her internet connection. Okay, so now we'll go to our citizen representatives. Karen Goodno McGuire?
Yes.
Thank you. And Joanne Hildreth?
Yes.
Thank you. And we'll go with Greg Twombly next.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Morgan? Can't remember if he's technically part of this, but we'll accept your approvals. Thank you. Dr. McKenzie? Okay, and Dr. Flaherty? And Rachel Abel? Yes. Did I miss anyone? I think that's it for the voting members. Okay, so that May 5th set of meeting records has been approved. Our next set is for May 12th. So I have a motion to approve the May 12th meeting records. Those are the short. Okay, so I'll make the motion. Dr. Flaherty is seconding. We'll just go down the list again. Cameron Redmond?
Yes.
Karen Goodno McGuire?
Yes.
Greg Twombly?
Yes.
Thank you. Andre Morgan?
Yes.
Ava Mack, are you back with us? Not yet. Okay, Joanne Hildreth?
Yes.
And let's see. Dr. Morgan, Joanne Hildreth, yes. Rachel Abel, yes. And Dr. Flaherty? Yes. Okay. We're gonna just say both of those were unanimous. Everybody's moving around on my screen. Okay, those are the first two items. Then next is recognition of our departing committee members. And I do believe, Dr. Flaherty, your slides are up. We can see them now. We're not hearing you through the... Do you have to unmute?
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
Okay. All right, we have three topics that we will be doing this evening after we do recognition. So this is just an overview of the agenda. We'll be looking at school handbook changes for the fall, an overview of our summer PD offerings, and then we have a wonderful celebration at the end with a video to share with everybody. But before we do that, one of the most important things we wanted to do this evening was to say thank you. This has been a... You know, the word has been used a lot this year, but it... There really isn't another word to use but unprecedented. We hope it's one that we don't ever have to live through again. But it is through the commitment and the passion that the members of our whole school community, and especially tonight, our SISIL members had throughout the whole year that really helped us to have a unprecedented year, but in many ways, a normal year with so many wonderful things for our students. And that is due to the hard work of our teachers, our administrators, all of our public school staff and our parents, and in particular, the volunteers that had a lot going on at home and in their own lives and still gave up time to help this committee to do the important work that they do all year long. And so for our student reps, they'll be moving on and won't be back with us. Our parent reps will be with us at least through January, and hopefully they'll choose to stay longer than that. And our administrative rep, Mr. Greg Trombley, will hopefully stay with us next year as well. But we just wanted to take a moment to say thank you. We do have certificates that we will be sending to each person, and for our students, they'll also be getting a little thank you gift with the gift card to Atomic Cafe. And I'll just hold up the certificate so everybody can see what it looks like. And we would like to just take a moment to personally recognize our student reps, Deja Jones, Ava Mack, Cameron Redmond, Evan Wong, William, Billy Adams, Virginia Betts, and we wish William and Virginia great luck as they move off to college next year. We hope maybe we'll see our middle school reps back again once they hit the high school and rejoin us. Our parent reps, Karen Goodrow McGuire, Joanne Hildreth, Lorraine Sudak, and again, our administrative rep, Mr. Greg Twombly. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts and know that the work that you do is important and that it's valued and very much appreciated. And now I think we have two of our students with us, and so we'd like to give them a chance to share what's going on in their schools or in their thoughts as well. So we'll start with Cameron tonight.
Hi, so we've basically just in school been working on a bunch of projects, you know, wrapping up units, doing FPAs, and that's pretty much it. But it's been really fun because we're gonna have a ropes course field trip soon for eighth graduation, so that'll be fun to do.
That sounds like a lot of fun, but be careful too. And is... Did Ava get to reconnect with us?
No, it wasn't Ava who reconnected. We welcome Tammy Whitfield.
She's the guest, so they went out to join. That was the audience.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we know that there's a lot of things going on and many of our students may be involved in the band concert or in multiple other activities that are going on this evening. So we just... We hope that all of our students have a wonderful last week of school. We know it's gonna be very busy. Hopefully, starting tomorrow, the weather will be much cooler, so you'll be able to enjoy the time in your activities for the remaining days of school. So now I'd like us to move on to our focus topics, and the first one being our suggested handbook changes. You all receive these in your packet. We did send our handbooks off to our attorneys to have them take a look at them. And one of the feedbacks that we got that we've had a lot of updates in policy and in law changes. And so they have sent us, and there's a link to each of the policy that we need to make sure are included, and we will update them in the handbooks with formatting over the summer. But all of those will be in our book. They will also gonna take a look to send a template to make sure that we have all of any other changes that have come in. They're doing this for all their districts. And next year, we'll be doing a deep dive on our handbooks and trying to condense or at least make them more user-friendly. Some of our handbooks are quite long now, and we we know that people are not gonna sit down and read an 80, 90, or 100-page handbook, so we wanna find a way to make them more user-friendly for everybody. The good news, though, is that the handbooks are live documents because they're done electronically. And so any changes, if anything changes over the summer other than what we have proposed this evening, we will update the SISIL Committee in the fall before we get in our first meeting. We'll let you know if there was any other changes. In addition to the policies, and I'll just read them for those that don't have that documentation in front of them. There'll be changes to our conduct and discipline, so the old language will be taken out in this new policy. We'll replace our current discipline language. There'll be new language around searches. The student records and regulation and FERPA have some changes to them. As you know, earlier this year, the committee adopted the new Title IX policies and procedures. That will be updated in the handbook. We have new language around homeless students and enrollment rights and services. The discrimination and harassment complaint procedure has legal changes to it. Our equal opportunity and non-discrimination statement will be more prominent and will also be... Make sure that it is in alignment with what is on our website and in our policy so that there's alignment between the three. As you know, earlier this year, we also updated our website. And so the website does not... Has not caught up to all of the policy changes that the committee has made. And so that will be also a summer project that we'll be working on. And then the last legal recommendation was to update our policies on physical restraints and supportive procedures. We'll also make... And these are changes that will happen at all three levels, elementary, middle school, and high school. And then the other two kind of more housekeeping issues that will be done at all three levels is to make sure that the handbook reflects the fact for payment of meals next year, that regular meals for all three levels will be free for breakfast and lunch. If the snack bars are outside kind of cafe areas are able to open, those will be a fee base, but the regular breakfast and lunches will be free. And then, of course, we'll update directories and personnel changes. And so that will be happening at all three levels. I'll give you an overview, and then if you have questions, the high school has some additional updates that will be, again, just kind of housekeeping with the telephone directory. They have some language that's changing around extracurricular activity offerings. The attendance, as you know, we changed it during this year to five absences. It will revert back to its three absences. And we'll also add in some language around the administration working with students and families to provide resources for our chronically absent students. There is a change in language being recommended for the dress code and the anti-bullying prevention policy will be updated. The elementary level just has one small update other than the legal changes, and that is to update the kindergarten section to, say, free full-day kindergarten. That's an overview of the changes that are being proposed, so I would open it to any questions. Or Mrs. Taylor, do you have anything you wanna add in? Or just see what the questions are?
I did add something at the table. I changed the wording in the dress code.
Yes.
So the original sentence read...
Students who are wearing clothing that may be considered revealing will be asked to adjust what they are wearing.
And I was going to change the word revealing to disruptive.
Which aligns to the language that's in the school committee policy. Any questions? Ms. Ava?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Taylor, for aligning that. I think someone's mic is still on. One of my questions, thank you whoever just muted, one of my questions is whether the activities over the summer for alignment would include cross-references to the policies that the school committee had adopted. For instance, number one would align to JIC, number two with JIH. And then, you know, and so on and so forth. I have a list here that I had compiled to see the efforts that the attorney have undertaken align to Mass General Law and to any other updates. I think that the policy Subcommittee will need to do some work this summer as well to make sure that we've captured all of the updates. I know a number of them have been captured through our work that we've done through last summer up through the spring, and they haven't necessarily all been loaded to the website yet. And it's one of those important but not urgent items that we need to catch up on. But I thank you for making it easy for parents to cross-reference from the handbooks to the policies that...
Yeah, that triangulation will be something that we wanna work on.
Okay, so Dr. Flaherty's saying that triangulation will be something that we work on. It's really challenging to have people remotely participating together. So thank you so much, Dr. Flaherty. Are there other questions? I'm looking for hands.
And this is an action item that we need the committee vote on. So can I make a motion to adopt the suggested handbook changes as outlined in the detailed materials with the change of, under the dress code, changing the word revealing to disruptive? Disruptive? Distracting? Distracting.
You can make that motion. Do we have a second? Dr. McKenzie will give a second. Okay, I'm looking for questions. Any hands? I'm not seeing any at this time. I guess I just will say for myself, I look forward to the summer work to make sure that we get all of our i's dotted and t's crossed, so thank you very much. I will call the roll. Dr. McKenzie? Joanne Hildreth?
Yes.
Andre Morgan?
Yes.
Cameron Redmond?
Yes.
Dorothy Flaherty?
Yes.
Karen Goodno McGuire?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. I think those are our voting members that are online, so that's unanimous. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 to 0. Okay, thank you, Dr. Flaherty.
Thank you all very much. Our next item is, I wanted to just give you a quick overview of the summer PD that we're gonna be offering. This went out to all staff today, and I wanted to be able to provide you with a look at all the offerings that we're going to be doing. One of the things that came back on an interest survey was that people really wanted to be able to do some work independently. I think everybody, including everybody probably in this room, is ready for a vacation and a little bit of a break, but still wanna keep learning and working. And so having that ability to do some asynchronous work came back as an important option. And so I think you'll see that we have quite a variety of opportunities, and some are in-person, but there is a significant number of opportunities that will run asynchronously as well. So we'll be offering two courses that people can take for either PDPs, or they have the option of taking three grad credits. So it'll be the 30 PDPs or three grad credits. And the first one is called "If Equity is a Priority, UDL is a Must." As you know, UDL is a core goal for us, and this is a course that's being offered through our Maple Consortium. And it looks like it is going to be a wonderful class. And you'll see this actually listed twice on the list because they've been very generous with us that there are kind of two components to this course. There's one that will be done live but virtual on July 20th, 21st, and 22nd, which will be an overview of a book that was written. And they are allowing us unlimited seats to that. And so people, we can take that for 10 PDPs. And then if you take the whole course, which continues on through August and some project work that needs to be done, that will be the full three-credit course. The... We will also be offering a project-based learning course again. It was previously offered in the summer of 2019. As you know, we didn't have a lot of in-person PD last year, and this is a course that works. You need to have some in-person work with it, but it will be offered in a hybrid model, so there'll be some in-person, or you can also log in virtually. This is worth two graduate credit courses if you choose, or 45 PDPs. And we have a lot of new staff members that have come onboard that we're hoping will take this at the elementary level, and where we have been getting... At our last course that we did in 2019 had a lot of middle school and high school teachers that take it, so we are hoping that we'll get some teams of people that will also come in and use this, and they walk away with a unit that they can use throughout the school year. This will also have some introduction to the course, to project-based learning, for people that are brand-new to it. And there'll be a deeper dive that will follow it for people that wanna take it to a further level. And then for both of these courses, we have a nice course that's shaping up for the fall, and it will be kind of a nice follow-up to either one of those, and it's called "Advancing with Blended Learning." And this is gonna be based on Kaitlyn Tucker's new course, which is just being finalized now, but it's most likely will run through the months of October, November, and December. Then we will be offering some PD courses for June 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, right after we get out of school. We had some days left with Apple, and they have put together quite an extensive choice board that teachers can choose from. It will be three days of full-day training. And teachers can choose to pop into just one session. They can do two or three. Or if they choose, they can take 10 hours and then bundle it for 10 PDPs. So we're trying to give a lot of choice in the options that teachers will have. But you can see that there's some stuff on accessibility. We have a session on storyboard creation, book creation, interactive word walls and vocabulary, using worksheet and notebook creation. And some of the lessons and units will repeat so that if something's happening, you can take it at a different time. There's also a great session on creating your own podcasts. We are... Oh, you can see that here is the 10 PDPs that people can take for the "If Equity is a Priority, UDL is a Must." We're also encouraging our leadership and our teachers, as many as can, to sign up through the ECLC, our partnership with Essex County Learning Community. They have their Summer Institute coming up, and they have some wonderful speakers, national speakers that are coming. And the focus is going to be on what are the challenges and opportunities that we'll be navigating next year as we look at recovery from what we've been through in the last 15 months. We're... We have a... Two different versions. One that a teacher can take for 10 PDPs. The primary audience will be pre-K through 5 around CSOW. And then we also have a choice on the choice board that people can use that one of our literacy coaches at AIRS, Lauren Oxford, put together on how to use CSOW in your classroom. So that is a session that you can take as well. The Landmark Summer Institute has a very strong offering with a lot of what they call one-hour workshops, and it's around meeting the needs of students, not just with dyslexia, but also struggling readers. There's some seminars that we will cover the cost for, and people can take one session or they can bundle them together through Landmark. We also... This is one that I really hope people will take some opportunity to explore. One of the silver linings, and I think you're gonna hear a lot of us talk about that through the summer and in the fall, it's kind of shaping up to be kind of the framework for next year because there were some good things that came out of what we have been through in the last year, and there are things that we wanna keep. And one of the wealth of resources that provided some really wonderful access to curriculum units was PBS. And I'm not sure that everybody had time or kind of there was so much flying at you from multiple directions to know that the PBS resources really span from early childhood, pre-K, all the way through high school. And there is some really good information on that site. And so we're encouraging people to spend 10 hours in there, and they can do a lesson plan from what they found, and if they provide that to their principals, then they have the option to also bundle 10 PDPs. But I highly recommend taking some time to explore that PBS site. The middle school and high school, we have a lot of teachers that used Pairdeck over the last year, and there are others that wanna learn it and just didn't have the time, so we are... Have a workshop that people can take to become more adept at using Pairdeck. As you know, we have two new math programs for 6 through 12 with Reveal and Alex. And the elementary schools will be going into their second year of ZERN. And so we also purchased the PD, the professional development that goes along with both programs. And so we... The ZERN program, we will have that through the end of next June. And so we're encouraging teachers to take some time to dive deeper into each of the missions. And if they spend 10 hours using the PD and then have an end product, most likely a lesson plan, but it could also be a presentation to their team of teachers or an overview for parents. There's a lot of different ways that you can provide evidence of learning, then they can earn 15 PDPs. And the same is true for our teachers in grades 6 through 12. They're just getting their curriculum. They had their initial demo lesson last week. And so they can have time to use the new curriculum and tools. And if they produce a lesson plan or evidence of learning, then they can also submit for 15 PDPs, and they will come back to school feeling more confident with their new tools. Last year, we offered the AJ Giuliani course. We did have some seats left for that. People that took it found it to be very helpful, and it's really focused on preparing for adaptable and flexible teaching and learning, which is another silver lining that we wanna be able to keep moving forward. And so there are some seats available for that as well. One of the comments that we got through the interest survey was that there was a lot on our choice boards that we offered in September and November, and people wanted to have an opportunity to be able to go back to those choice boards and visit some of the workshops that they weren't able to access that day or throughout the year, so the choice boards are also available to them. And then, as always, individual curriculum projects can be approved by the principal or by being submitted or reaching out to me. So if a team of teachers or a teacher wants to do some curriculum work, that's also a proposal that they can submit. Again, on PBS, there is a four-part series that is coming up on tools for anti-racist teaching. And so this link is there so that you can sign up for this as well, and you can receive four PDPs for that. And you can receive four PDPs for that. And then the DESI has come out with what they're calling, and we mentioned, I believe at a previous school committee meeting, an acceleration roadmap. And really, all of the research that we're seeing and the guidance that's coming out from the department is that we want to move forward accelerating grade-level learning and scaffolding where students may have gaps or need strength in the standards and not spending a whole year remediating what they may not have learned in the previous year. And these are workshops that we're encouraging our administrators as well as our teachers. There's two tracks. And I'll show the link so that you can see the choices that are there. There is a roadmap to follow for an introduction. But then there is also a set of seminars for building leaders. And it's a series. And then there's also a series of workshops that are available for classroom teachers. And we are hoping that many of our staff will sign up for those as well. And then we're offering for teachers that are using the Summit Platform, some refresher webinars that are available to them if they would like to take that. And that is an overview of our summer PD. Any questions?
Looking for hands? I think I had one quick question. Some of these are very specific to a subject. Is there anything that prevents teachers from deciding to go outside of their discipline? For instance, if people wanted to learn more about Reveal and Alex, would they have to be a 6 to 12?
No, 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 that's just the, kind of the top people is who it's designed to. But those links would be open. The Reveal and Alex, you need a code. So they would need to probably contact us and we can get them a demo code to learn from.
Okay, so I was wondering, I guess, if the K to 5 that are learning ZERN also had a curiosity that is an opportunity?
They could contact me and we could get them a demo code. For elementary, all teachers across all four grades can have access to ZERN. And for the Alex, it's a demo, we need a code for it. So if they contact the office, we can get that for them.
Okay, thank you. I'm again looking for hands. I don't see any with our participants. So I'm not hearing Dr. Churchwick through my speakers, but basically she's thanking Dr. Flaherty and Judy Miller. She forgot to come on mute.
I forgot to come off mute. I'm on my phone.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And before we just move on, I also want to, I can't thank Judy Miller enough. She's my right hand. And it was a pleasure working with her and couldn't have done it without her. So our final topic for this evening is something that we were very lucky to be able to get. We wanted to be able to kind of have a showcase and something that could live on beyond this year, but that would document the experience of everything that we've been through. And we have a dad that is an Ayers dad, Mr. Jeb Fisher, who's also a professional videographer. He owns his own company. And he had reached out to Megan Hart about creating a video for the Ayers School. And then when we reached back out and said, would you be willing to do this as something that would capture the entire district? He was more than willing and excited to do it. And he spent a day traveling around to all of our schools and getting some great input and collecting photographs. And so I just thought this would be a very fitting way to end the year. And I can tell you, I watched it earlier today with Ellen, my administrative assistant. And as soon as it started, it kind of caught me off-guard because I had watched the draft of it. But once I saw it and realized that we really are coming to the end of the school year next year, I just broke down into tears when I saw all that we accomplished. And I think that what really stands out as you watch it is how different our school year was, but also how normal our school year was. And so I will play this for you now and hope that you all appreciate it. It's about seven minutes long. There's no sound. I don't know how to get.
And students and staff alike are always going to help each other. I'm very proud of how my staff are supportive and helping with this and above this.
This year was a little weird because my teachers and my friends did whatever they did. So we still have the students work together socially within the department. We made sure that we were using outdoor learning spaces so that they can work in small groups. As the year progressed, we got more comfortable with the support of teachers people and, you know, teach them in that small group setting, you know, only four students at a time. And that really, I think, reassured them that things were definitely still the same.
What I found was astounding is how relationships were developed over the years. That is not the reality, but it's the relationship teachers and teachers and students.
All of my teachers knew how this needs to work. I knew distances and safety and distance and safety of everything. So it was very secure.
One of the things we, one, we didn't realize we were going to be in this world for as long as we were planned for going remote at any moment. But we went remote for a couple of weeks. Right away, we thought we could get it, we can six weeks. We're going to be happy with that, build relationships with our kids. And we have a school tag for the whole year. So that was amazing. And then one of the other things we worried about was math. How are the kids in the math class on? They just, they did it. And whatever we asked of them, they were able to do. And the expectations were bad. Pretty normal experience despite a lot of different.
But we did fine with it. But now, like, after that, we just, like, became careful more. And like, it's going to get warmer and starting to play a lot more.
When I look back this year, I will remember the small exercise, even being able to spend more time outside, which I really wasn't sure if it was going to work. Having the seventeen refrigerators in our pool area, doing foundations and whiteboard work, bringing out all the materials. But they adjusted really fast. And we were able to do math outside and collect rocks, use addition with rocks and adding on the whiteboards and being outside, getting a little closer outside. It was definitely a year I will never forget.
I think the students, what impressed me about the student body was that they were able to be so resilient, teaching them, so resilient. And keeping that positive attitude, trying to say that, yeah, everything's going to be all right. We're in a tough situation right now, but everything is going to be all right.
When I look back on this year, I think that one of the things, I feel it's a very successful year for us just thinking how much we learned, like, on changing things. We always slow, change through rows, change for ourselves, and that really changed on how we worked back.
I think we did pretty well.
Yeah, we did, and it's a good year, but the teachers helped us there.
My teachers had to do something a little bit different for this year because still did a really good job in making it fun.
It really helped us eliminate what we really don't need within the classroom. And that's just not epidemic-wise, it's, you know, spending the time together and form our relationships and what we really want to focus on next year. Because we've done it, and done it pretty well, I think, across the district.
Yeah, it was like planned, except for the reason. We worked out really well, I think, like, you break our rooms, you can split up into groups. There weren't a lot of, like, slitches or bugs.
Yeah, everything changed, so we needed to learn how to do the technology part. And it made it so that when we did come into the building, I was able to integrate everything that we were doing online. And they all had iPads, so one-to-one. And it was great because we really still couldn't move around. I just learned new ways of teaching virtually and now I can move with two.
I think that everyone, like, really adapted. Like, at first, it was kind of hard, but one slight improvement I learned what to do. I had a one experience, we really came together and got out.
I mean, I've never used an iPad. Now we're very proficient at using an iPad and conversing with the students and showing and using the iPad as a whiteboard for me to project onto the screen in class but also projected to the students at home. They actually had something and they actually had the ease technology for real. Like, people do whatever they want.
All team together, we set our goals and we achieved them.
Everybody stepped up and collaborated well and on their A-game. And it showed, and the students and families and the teachers appreciated how everything came together. There were hard times, there were challenging times, but it's a stronger and smarter.
And that was a wrap of the year. Any questions?
I'm sure you'll send us the link to the YouTube video.
Yes.
Thank you. I really enjoyed that and I look forward to listening to it a little bit more closely.
I think so too. And we have an administrative retreat on June 22nd, so we don't get away from it. We want to do it right while it's still fresh in our minds to say, what is it that we want to keep? How do we reimagine what we're doing and not just go back to, you know, fall back into our old ways? So I know outdoor learning will definitely be a part of our future, as will outdoor lunch. I think a lot of the elementary schools never want to go back to a cafeteria again.
I'm looking for more hands, anyone at home or remote? I'm not seeing any hands.
If not, I'd just take the opportunity again to thank everybody for all of your time and efforts and passion and commitment to our students and teachers. And these are always one of my favorite times of the month because the focus is all about teaching and learning. And that's the heart of what we do. So thank you all for your efforts this year. And this is our last meeting until the fall.
Okay, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. I'll second that. I guess we technically need to roll call vote. Dr. McKenzie. Okay, Joanne Hildreth.
Yes.
Andre Morgan.
Yes.
Cameron Redmond.
Yes.
Dorothy Flaherty.
Yes.
And Karen Gooden McGuire.
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, and that is unanimous. I think that's all we have left on here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
Yes.
Oh, Greg Clombley, I apologize. Thank you. Okay, there's our seventh. Okay, thank you, everyone. We appreciate it so much. See you in the fall.